I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the West Orange Board of Education Reorganization Meeting and Happy New Year. First order of business is the announcement of the election results. The election was held on November 6, 2018. Three candidates ran for two three-year terms. So I have two sets of results. One from the county, one from the township. The county gave us results and they were certified, but they missed one of the machines. So I spoke to the township today and they gave me the final tally that included that one machine. So I asked the county to send me a revised report over with the correct numbers and they said at this point, we don't have it for you yet, but you have to go with the certified totals that they originally gave us. But I'm going to give you both, but it's not going to change the outcome of the election. So we had Jeremiah Selena's county, 8,197, township, 8,279. And you'll see the township's higher because they're at one additional machine. Cheryl Merklinger, 8,435, county, township, 8,526. Terry Trigg Scales, 8,320, county, township, 8,397. At this time, I would like to swear in Mrs. Merklinger. Would you please come to the podium?
Please raise your right hand. Please take the following oath by reading the following.
I, Cheryl Merklinger, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Cheryl Merklinger, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of Board of Education and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
Terry Trigg Scales?
Please raise your right hand and please take the following oath by reading the following. I, Terry Trigg Scales, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Terry Trigg Scales, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
So I'll present you with the plaques from the clerk of SS County indicating that you were duly elected as a school board member without the number of votes.
Okay.
Mr. Alper?
Here.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Here.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Here.
Mr. Robertson?
Here. Sorry.
Mrs. Trigg Scales?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, Constitution of the Republic, which stands united nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
I announce the notice of the meeting that a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on December 4, 2018. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the lobby administration building of the Board of Education. Okay, the floor is now open for nominations for President of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Ken Alper as President of the Board of Education.
And I will nominate myself, Mark Robertson, for President of the Board.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close nominations for President of the Board?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, may I? Okay. First of all, whether Mr. Alper wins or I win, I want you to know I have the utmost respect and genuinely like and we work well together. I've been on the Board for five years now. I've been Vice President three times on the Board. I've served as the Chair of every committee, Chair or Co-Chair of every Board Committee, and I've been a leading voice on, in the area of accountability for the Board and Superintendent for that five years. I was also a leading voice when it came to improvements in guidance that led to the guidance audit and the guidance revamping, as well as for first, the expansion of honors and then honors reform. And I'm going to continue the battle to continue to reform honors. I've also been a leader in advocacy when it came to code and engineering. As Mr. Fitzgerald noted, that I was even the first to advocate for that to happen at Edison and it's now there. Here's what I'd like, here's what my vision and focus is really is. I mean, we have a lot of work to do in terms of student achievement and in terms of safety and security. And first and foremost, coming off of the past couple of years, we obviously also had a lot of work to do, I think systemically, when it's come to accountability. It's not just about an individual, it's about the system. And there's some things that we need to fix in the system. One, look at the superintendent's evaluation. Currently, most people don't realize that when we go through this very detailed evaluation process, at the end of it, only a one or two-page summary is what actually ends up counting and it doesn't necessarily have any quantitative evidence in there. So I'd like to change and refine that evaluation process so that there is actual quantitative and qualitative data that's in the evaluation that also then can lead to improvement plans, corrective actions, et cetera, and not just depend on what a particular, what the Board, what direction the Board is going politically or in terms of Board sentiments or superintendent's personality or style. We need to be able to give actual data and information. Number two, you know, to ensure that teachers, parents, and students really have a voice. We need to codify, institutionalize the idea of stakeholder engagement, stakeholder input, and we can do that. I spoke to the head of policy for school boards. He says that we can actually build into the superintendent's job description, which then become part of the evaluation, for the superintendent to have to include surveys, focus groups, et cetera, when leading any new initiative or major program change, so we can ensure that people have a voice, that the input is heard. Next, SMART goals. You've heard me talk for five years about the need for us for the Board and Superintendent to be using SMART goals. What do I mean by that? SMART, specific, measurable, accountable, et cetera. And frequently, we have goals that restate our duties, but they're not accountable, they're not measurable. And those are areas for accountability. With a focus on communication, 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 and stakeholder engagement, I'd like to do several things. One, you've heard me speak before and recommend that we take a look at revamping the Board's agenda. And so that parents who don't want to go home and actually attend to their families don't have to wait two or three hours before they speak out on particular issues that may not be on the agenda. They get to speak out earlier upfront, earlier in the meeting. If they still have additional comments later, that can come. But two, to ensure the Board is actually efficient in running the meeting, I'd like to do a hard stop. I'd like to say that there's a certain point so we can move through the meeting where it cuts off, whether it's 11 o'clock or whatever it is we agree on, so we don't have all-night Board meetings. And if we need to schedule another one, then we do that. But this is about communications, about efficiency and effectiveness. The website, we've spoken about this for three years, ensuring that we have a website that is operative for mobile, it's mobile optimized, that can easy to search, that we can actually find information on, and that we can highlight our top programs and our, you know, what really makes our district special. Town hall meetings, we've talked about these, we're blue in the face, actually having it. And we found out from school boards that a Board President can hold a Board meeting with the full quorum, with a quorum, held as a town hall meeting, so we could hear from people, interact with people, and change how we engage, how we interact, how we interface. And then Community Relations Committee. Mr. Alper and I have actually been talking about that for a while and intended to put it into place. And then last year, one of the things unfortunately I had to lead as Vice President and Acting President was we dealt with a long stretch of issues around personnel and legal. That was the most, one of the most harrowing periods we've had to go through as a Board in a district. So we didn't get to follow through on that. But we have the opportunity to do a Community Relations Committee where each Board Member selects members of the committee they think should be on that, and we have another opportunity to engage and communicate with our public, with our parents, with our teachers. Opportunity is there. Want to improve fairness, fairness and excellence when it comes to student achievement, we still have honors reform to do. We're relying too much on exams. The Board actually has a responsibility to approve curricula, and that's an area I've also led advocacy on. So we need to look at how to make grades really count for the grades that the kids are making and not force them and not always be focusing on the stress of this exam after that exam. And we need to actually explain to parents what the math test is and how it factors into their children's lives. So stop overtesting, focus more on grades, develop a grading rubric for K to 8 as the high school did, and it's proven to improve fairness and helped with achievement. Additionally, you know, we've talked about a number of areas where kids, where we can improve fairness. We need to do diversity and anti-bias training, or you can call it cross-cultural training. We need to continue our diversity recruitment efforts strategically. We need to actually follow through on the affirmative action plan based upon real data and real goals and real objectives and not broad and generalizations, and engage HBCUs and HSIs, historical Hispanic institutions and African-American or historical Black colleges in greater depth. But we have to improve in these areas from a standpoint of fairness and standpoint of improving excellence and achievement. And we still have a ways to go. We're starting to fix the math pathway. We still only have code and engineering in sixth grade when it comes to K to 8, and we were supposed to expand that years ago. So these are areas where we can improve student achievement, we can improve excellence and have an opportunity. Athletics, you know, we have amazing athletic department, and yet we have areas of that where we need to bring about a greater sense of fairness and consistency, but it's making sure that the varsity letter means the same thing for all sports, that there's actually a standard so that you don't have one child disappointed, upset, and crying because they thought they fulfilled the requirements that in fact another kid in another team fulfilled and got their varsity letter, his or her varsity letter. PE and health, we all, we all know about the explosion of the preponderance of anxiety and depression that has, that has hit our kids, and we haven't talked in our PE and health classes enough about that, or started training and education as early as elementary school, where we're seeing cases very early, or talked about the role of the smartphone and how there's, you know, the addiction codes and the stress that that causes. So updating our PE and health curriculum to be a modern one. Fiscal responsibility. I was ecstatic that two new Board Members were preaching about grants and fund development. Guess what, folks? We've had, I first brought that to this district, brought that initiative, and we've had a grant writer through New Jersey School Boards, the New Jersey School Boards, to do grant research, but we haven't written one corporate grant or one foundation grant through this initiative in three years. Unacceptable. And that's an opportunity to reduce the taxpayer burden while improving the funding for our activities and programs in the classroom. As a Board, we have an opportunity to bond more and to communicate better. One, by actually utilizing the workshop system. You saw the dysfunction when we had only one workshop for the Board goals, and then we had that awful conversation that went on. Well, guess what? You don't start out just with a brainstorming workshop, you're supposed to do follow-up workshops to finalize, and if you can't agree, at least agree to disagree in how you're going to approach it. But fully utilizing the workshop system to deal with different issues as well as to deal with Board goals more effectively. And two, reexamining our committee system to see how we can better utilize that. Right now, some of the greatest changes that occur in our district annually are curriculum changes, are Board Members on any of those curriculums. Is there a curriculum committee for the Board? No. And yet, guess what? One of our primary governance responsibilities is curriculum. And also in terms of fiscal responsibility, last point, utilization, proper utilization of the incremental funds that we get from the state. We have left out there a wall at Washington that's crumbling that we should have invested 600,000 in. We have left, we have funded, we have the funding for a safety and security audit and cyber audit. But do we set aside funding for what the audit results produce and what recommendations they make? No, we did not. We also have not, we have to look at the funding necessary to deal with the CO2 issues, which could be 1.2 million for the high school alone, and the water issues that we've had, et cetera. We need to make sure that we're utilizing the incremental state funding to support the safety and security of our kids and to support student achievement, our two primary, number, our top two reasons for being. And finally, you know, what I hope to bring is with the five years of experience and the battles that I've been fighting, you've seen me advocate, I've been there, I really hope to bring not only the knowledge and the passion, but I do think that we as a Board can re-engage each other in a much more meaningful and dynamic way and re-engage the wonderful new opportunities we have with new administrators or administrators in new positions and re-engage in a meaningful way for what's going to be most important this coming year, our superintendent's search, and make sure that we're engaging our public, our parents, and our community in that process. That's what I hope to bring, and thank you.
Mr. Calavano, you didn't ask for a second. That was motion second and then discussion. All right. You have two motions on the floor?
No, well, right now...
You're going to do the second after the discussions?
Yeah, what I'll do now is since we have more than one nomination, I'll take the vote on the candidates in order they were nominated. So the first candidate to receive majority vote will win.
Okay.
Is there further discussion before we vote?
Yes, if you want further discussion, got you.
Sure. Obviously, I also have the utmost respect for Mark, who of course has served as Vice President in the past. I think we agree on an awful lot of things. We've discussed an awful lot of these things together in the past, the website and a lot of the other things. I really believe that as we turn the page on 2018, finally, it's time to focus on our processes on the Board, including our meetings and their management, and prioritize our work accordingly. More importantly, I think, you know, we have to make sure we focus immediately on health and safety issues, our water and air quality, they're the most important things we have. The second most important thing the Board this year has to do, and generally the most important thing any Board has to do, is conducted superintendent's search, and I want to make certain that that is run smoothly and efficiently and properly. Besides that, I'd like to see us finally enact, as does Mark, town hall meetings, Q&amp;A sessions, workshops. I'd like to see PTA liaisons where Board Members are going to PTA meetings when they can, so that we're just more visible in the community, more able to answer questions as they come up, you know, without people having to come out to a meeting, other than walking to their own neighborhood school. As Mark said, I'd like to also consider adding a certain comment period at the beginning. I think maybe, you know, five, 10 people commenting at the beginning so that some people can get out of here and not have to sit around through the rest of the Board business of the day before they can tell us what's on their minds. We also need to ensure that our athletics and academic programs are both extremely strong and continuing to keep students here in our district. But all in all, I just want to say that I'd like to be able to lead this Board in the next year and really focus on those management, process, efficiency, and functionality issues. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so we'll start with Ken Alper for President of the Board. I'll take roll call now. It'll be a yes or a no, or an abstention. Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Can I make you get right on one?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
No.
Mrs. Trigg Scales?
No.
We have a majority, it's 3-2. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Alper.
Mr. Alper, President of the Board of Education.
Congratulations.
Let's move the switch.
Yes.
First.
Okay. The next order of business is item C, the election of the Vice President. Do we have a nomination for Vice President? I would like to nominate Mrs. Mordecai. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Scales.
Any further? Okay, so I need a motion to close the nominations?
Mm-hmm. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. So we now vote on the first put forth nomination for Mrs. Mordecai?
Correct.
And that's, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mrs. Mordecai for Vice President of the Board of Education. Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
No.
Mrs. Trigg Scales?
Yes.
Okay.
President Alper?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mrs. Mordecai, Vice President of Board of Education.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to keep your existing seat and you two can switch instead? Does that work?
Are we going to switch? Because normally it's still your right.
Doesn't matter. Whatever makes everyone happier. All right.
Do you want to keep your seat?
Whatever floats your boat, it's okay.
Thank you.
We're going to keep it as it is, at least for now? All right, we'll keep it as it is. All right. Moving on. Congratulations.
Moving on.
All right, next up, items D through T, we're going to exclude F, which is the designation of Board roles, and L, the Code of Ethics. So if we can have a motion for D through T excluding F and L.
I'll make a motion.
Can we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Merklinger?
Excluding F, right?
Yeah, F and L.
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trigg Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
Okay, so for item F, Board Designations, I believe we should just make sure that we're all doing what we want to do. The first?
Sure.
One is New Jersey School Boards Association, the delegate?
I believe it was Cheryl or Terry is the alternate.
Okay, and we're going to go through them all and then just vote on them all, yes or no. We just want to make sure we have them all right. For SS County School Boards Association, Sandra's going to remain as the delegate and I'm going to become the alternate for that. For legislative, Terry's going to be the Chair and I'm going to alternate that. For negotiations, that'll be me and you, Mark.
Yep, Mark and Ken, yep.
Policy, Sandra and Terry. Board Liaison, me and Cheryl. And PR, Mark and Cheryl.
Yep.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve item F?
So moved.
And can we have a second?
Second.
All right, let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trigg Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
Have a PR partner.
Okay, next is item L, the Code of Ethics. So we read this part out loud and we'll do it as we've done in the past years where each of, we'll just go left to right, starting with Mrs. Scales and work our way down. I'll read the little initial part beforehand and then you can start when you get to A. "The members of the Board of Education recognize that they hold authority, not as individuals, but as members of the Board. In order to make a clear public statement of its philosophy of service to the pupils of the District, the Board adopts this Code of Ethics."
A, "I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
C, I will confine my Board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted those who will be affected by them. D, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow Board Members to see that they are well-run.
E, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the Board. F, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interest or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
G, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow Board Members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools. H, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer.
I, I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. J, I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of administrative solution.
Great. Can we have a motion to move the Code of Ethics item L?
I'll make a motion.
All right, second?
Second.
Great. Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trigg Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is item three, petitions and hearings of citizens. If you'd like to speak, you'll have three minutes. Mr. Calavano will run the clock. Please come on up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Orin Levin, 5 Corwell Circle, West Orange. Two quick comments on the agenda and then two questions. First, I noticed that as we just voted for, or as you guys just voted for Board Designations, the alternates for a couple of these are marked as not applicable, and yet you voted for alternates for all positions. So which, which is correct, the agenda or what you voted for? I believe there is a typo in the proposed contract for the Acting Superintendent under Benefits, Section 5(c). I suspect that vacation should begin January 8, 2019, not 2018. The two questions. My son brought his Chromebook to Roosevelt near the beginning of December. It wasn't working properly. He has been limping along with a loner since then with no clear explanation as to when his Chromebook will come back from being repaired. Would it make more sense that when the school sends a Chromebook out, that you assign one of the spares to the student, and then when the repaired Chromebook comes back, put that back into the spare supply? It's been very frustrating for him, having to go down to the technology desk every morning, get a laptop, take it back at the end of the night, end of the day. With the different Chromebooks, there's kind of a mismatch, there aren't power cords for everything. Finally, he also turned in his working papers, just turned 14 recently. It's taken about a month to get it back. It just came back from school today, not signed by the principal, he's going to take it back tomorrow. But as a parent, there's no real information as to how long the process should take. There was... to how long the process should take. There was no real explanation why the working papers went from Roosevelt here to the, as they said, here to the high school, to the central office. But it would be very helpful if there was a better understanding for parents as what the process would be. Thank you.
Jennifer Beazer, 82, Lawrence Avenue. I have a question and a comment. My question is about boys volleyball. I thought last year that both fencing and boys volleyball had been approved as new sports, and I've received the information about fencing, because I have a middle schooler, but I just got the notice for boys volleyball, which looks like it comes with a cost to participate, and it is in the evening, not right after school. And I'm wondering if that's, if volleyball is not going to be an interscholastic sport or what's happening, because practices after school are what make it possible for a lot of kids to participate in the high school. And this is just a comment, and I don't really expect a response, but having, congratulations to the new Board members, and looking forward to a really good and productive year, moving on from some hard times. And I know Mr. Alper, and I have great respect for him, and I'm sure that this will be a great year, but my observation of the way the Board works in the past has been that the presidency is rotated, and usually someone who's up for election that year will assume the presidency. And Mark is, has been a member of the Board for five years, and I believe, are you up? He's up possibly this year. And I find it a little strange that he's not given an opportunity to assume the presidency and whatever that brings with it. He's an elected member of the Board, just like everyone. He's been elected by the citizens of New York, and that disturbs me a little bit.
Thank you.
I feel like the, I'm Elizabeth Redwine from 10 Cobain Terrace, and I'm just introducing my neighbor, Sam Selikoff, who wanted to say a couple of words. You just have to say your address.
Sam Selikoff, two North Cobain Terrace. So I believe that students should have a bit better representation and ideas made by the Board, because it is the student's schools. Every, all the decisions made are for students' well-being, and the students should have better representation, because it is their school, so.
Gives me so much pleasure.
Hi, Cindy Matute Brown, 24, Corwell. Wanted to first congratulate both of our new Board members. Congratulations, and I want to just wish you well, and to the Board in its entirety. I had a question with respect to the timeline. Where are we? What's your plan for your search on superintendent? What's the community's participation? And I would hope, having been in education for 18 years now, because we finally have an educator on board, and this does not, it's not intended to disqualify anyone else's expertise, but I really, really am looking forward to guidance and leadership also with respect to curriculum and the search for superintendent. The wealth of information and expertise that Ms. Scales brings to us, 38 years in education, Assistant Superintendent, Schools of Montclair. We've got such a great opportunity here. I see that we're, Acting Superintendent is also on the agenda, so I wish you well, and I hope that we can finally move forward, and transparency is what we use as a vehicle to make sure that we, you know, continue to heal the relationship between the Board and the community for the well-being of our students and our schools. So congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Runt, 66, Mitchell. Wanted to congratulate Terry. You look fantastic. Happy to know that you're bringing all that much wellness and information and expertise to our district. There's so much in need of it. So I'm happy that you are here and that you are part of it. To Sherry, I hope that you'd really put the kids at your heart, and my staff, every single person, they work, serve, and give their heart to the district. And you maybe proved me wrong. Kenny, best of luck. But most important, I want to thank publicly to Ron, gosh, to Ron Charis for his job, for his sacrifice, and for always being there for the special needs population in the community. I really appreciate his job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Deborah Robinson, 11 Clean Street. Congratulations, everyone. As an employee here in the district, I was one of the teachers who stayed overnight during the snowstorm. And I just wanted to know, because we haven't heard anything about compensation. We haven't gotten paid for our time staying overnight, and we yet don't know if we are, if we are not going to get paid. We haven't heard anything. That's it. Thank you.
Jeremiah Salinas, seven Crystal Ave. Congratulations. Really appreciate it. It was a great experience.
Thank you.
There's a couple of things. Number one, I think everybody would like to know what's the status of the bubble. Doesn't seem to, anything to be happening out there with the construction. Second thing is, the mobile app needs to be updated. Mr. Ruskey was, let's let go almost two months ago, and he's still on the app as Superintendent of our schools. So I don't know if we have someone that's updating all that information as soon as possible. So I would like to see that. And I would also like to know what is going to be the procedure for compensation for all the teachers that stayed overnight. I haven't, I asked over at Redwood. I didn't quite get a clear answer as well either, and they didn't know whether it was going to be an hourly thing, or if there was any other ideas that were being kicked around. And look forward to a productive school year. Thank you.
Good evening. Gary Van Wijk, 71 Burnett Terrace. Congratulations to the new members of the Board. It's particularly great to have an educator on the Board. I wanted to ask if there's been any update on the system to have a GPS or some kind of geolocational devices on the buses, coming out of that chaos that ensued during the snowstorm, and also if action has been taken to update precisely the schedules of the buses, which are really about 10, 15, even 20 minutes inaccurate on the students' bus passes, which means that they stand outside in the freezing cold unnecessarily. So we really need to have a much more predictable schedule on the buses and the bus passes, and to have that system implemented. So if you could please update us. Thank you.
Hi, Gina Velazquez, 22, Corwell Circle. And I would also like to congratulate the new positions and President and all that. Welcome. I want to mention the one comment, and if somebody can direct me where to go to get help for this, for the dance, for the winter dance. You know, everybody's excited about it, including myself. However, for the special needs students, I believe that we need some modifications, or some partners, or something, so that they can enjoy the dance as well as the other, the typical peers. I would love to organize something where they can be partnered up with a peer. So if somebody can help me, I reached out to the PTA today, the principal, and my son's caseworker, only today, so I haven't heard anything, but if anybody knows anything that can direct me, point me in a direction, I would be happy. What?
Principal Moore is here.
So maybe he'll talk to me tonight. Thank you.
And I'm, yeah, we'll get that.
Good evening. My name is Amber Newsom. I live at 18 Auburn Road. I want to say I'm very excited about this new Board. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Congratulations, Cheryl. Congratulations, Terry, Ken. I also wanted to say you guys have been coming out to WOCPAC events, and we see you, and we appreciate the time that you take to get to know us, know the needs of the special needs community. I hope we can continue this relationship and continue to feel your support, and we will continue to support you as well. And just hope to continue to work together in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Catherine Connors, teacher here at West Orange High School. Also worked with our student liaisons, and noticed they were not on the agenda, and we did want to make sure that we gave them a chance to give some updates that we do have, including the winter dance.
Anyone further? All right, seeing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting. And Mrs. Dementes, if you want to respond to the administrative stuff that's in there?
Good evening. All right. Good evening. Happy New Year, everyone. To Mr. Levine, I will look into the Chromebook and get back with you, as well as the work papers, to see what the process is, and what's the delay, and why it would take a month. To Ms. Beazer, also, I'll have to get back to you, I don't know where you are, on the volleyball, and check the times and the cost to parents. So afterward, I'd love to hear. Thank you. Sam, thank you for your comment. I appreciate your interest in participating and taking ownership of your school. You are correct. As a student, we're here to serve you, so we welcome your comments, and especially, I'm assuming the Board would say the same.
Yes. Would you like the student representatives to respond to Sam, to explain to him the process for him to submit his comments to them?
Yeah, so you are incorrect in that you do have to, you do have a stake in whatever decisions get made, so you should have a say. So that's why we set up a student website. So while we do want to represent middle school, elementary school students as well, not just high schoolers, we can't, but we can't go meet out with students. So we rather, we set up a website instead, so where students like you can put in any commentary, any suggestions, any concerns. It's accessible on the wobo.org website as well, under the student links, I believe, and the student bulletin board, and also available on the West Orange Student Council Instagram page in the bio, if they want to go check that out. So we more than invite you to make yourself, to make use of these tools and to reach out to us if you have anything you want to say, and encourage others as well, because while we do want to represent, we don't have the opportunity to go out to the schools during the school day, because we also have to go to school. So we invite you to reach out to us that way as well.
There's also, we created a letter on the different ways you can get to our website, and that should be going out soon. And that'll have like the link to not only wobo.org, but I think other ways to access, as Sina just mentioned. So you should be getting that in the mail soon, and that'll take you to the website where you can tell us about your concerns.
If I may, we may want to consider, when we go to the homepage, on the left side of the homepage, there's some key links, and in the middle, there's also, there are also news updates where links can be. Perhaps if it's better highlighted too on the homepage, because, you know, once again, for the high school may need to know to go to the links that you currently have, but if it's on homepage and highlighted, and I'm not sure that it is, I don't believe it is.
I'm not sure, and it should be on the middle school pages as well.
It should be on the middle school pages as well, I was going to say, for each of the schools.
Right, once the letter's sent, that's a good idea.
Thank you. And I also wanted to comment on the Chromebooks. It's not just Roosevelt. My daughter's at Liberty going through the exact same thing. And it sounds more like it's a process issue to Mr. Levine, who by the way is an audible guy, so he knows all this. It sounds like a process issue, and to his point, if when a student has a Chromebook that's not working, and they get a replacement one, if they can simply keep that replacement one, be properly set up for with the proper chargers and everything, and then when the other one comes back, it goes into the replacement, into the replacement resources. So they're not having to check in every day to get a Chromebook, or having to set up a new one all the time.
Thank you. Regarding the mobile app, Mr. Salinas, we're definitely going to have to check on why old information is still on there. And with that said, we are relooking at our website. We have a committee that's being put together. They have already communicated with Blackboard to look at some options, so that we could better communicate with our community. That would include the mobile app. So that is something that's in process. Once we have our findings and we investigate what some options are, then we will make those presentations. Our hope is, depending on cost and our budget, of course, that would be the disclaimer, to adopt a new website for the 2019, 2020 school year. And would you give us a status on the bubble?
So for the bubble, the mechanicals are being installed now. We're hoping that the actual bubble structure will be up sometime next week, and I believe sometime next week we will be putting out the advertisement for bids for the interior work of the bubble.
Mr. Van Wijk, the systems for the GPS on the buses, we applied to Zonar, which is a company for the GPSs for a $50,000 grant. They gave us $23,000, which would cover the hardware, and we would pay for the subscription. We want the $50,000. So we went back to Zonar just this week. We met with them in conjunction with ESC, because we would like all of the features. So then we are resubmitting the grant and just asking for them to reconsider giving us all that we've asked for. If not, we'll have the GPS, we'll have the student cards, and we will have the geo-monitoring and all of the things that we've presented to the Board. What we would also like is a tablet where the bus drivers can really take a look at inspections, where we can say if someone is, the cameras that face forward, so we can tell if someone has run a red light, or if there's a traffic infraction. So if we're granted the whole, we would be able to bring the whole package to the Board for approval. If we're still granted the 23, we can move forward with our priorities. And then a Plan B in a future budget would be to take a look at the remaining areas. With that said, we will bring a recommendation to the Board on January 28th, and we can have it ready to go within a month, we're being told. Okay? The bus passes were reissued at the high school. I believe they were reissued at Edison. I will check the middle schools. I think we have an answer from Mr. Moore. We're going to get one regarding the winter dance. And I think that's it, Mr. Alper.
There is one other question regarding the delegates and the alternates. So for the top three committees or associations, it requires one person and one as an alternate. For the other four of those committees, Negotiations, Policy, Board Township requires two, so there's no alternate. There's two individuals on each of these committees.
Mr. Alper, would we be able to permit the ladies to give their report before we?
Absolutely. I think I had one or two other things to answer, and then we'll insert that next. On the contract, we'll definitely take care of that. That does sound like an obvious typo. We'll get that fixed. If we could at some point also look into the length of time it's taken for the working papers, to see if that's, you know, something unusual in that case, or if that's a routine sort of situation. Sam, thank you. And I think we got you answered on that one. As far as the timeline on a superintendent search, we have not been able to discuss this as a Board yet, because we haven't had the new Board in place late last year. We all made the determination on the outgoing Board that it would be improper for us to bind a future Board. So we're, some of the stuff that we're going to be talking about very soon, and we will let the community know and keep the community apprised as we go, as to what and when will be happening there. In terms of teacher compensation, we very much appreciate your sacrifices. You will be taken care of. We are in the process of discussing exactly how that will work, and it's And it's, it's in progress, and I believe that that was everything that we could comment on. And if other board members would like to respond to anything, now is that opportunity.
Mr. Mendez, do you want to talk about the bus schedules? Did you respond to that? Oh, you did, okay, alright. Um, I just want to say first of all, congratulations to Terry, and congratulations to Cheryl as well. Welcome aboard. Um, uh, thank you, Sam, for your input. It was so, so nice of you to come up. I'm looking forward to you joining the board at some point when these ladies' term of service is over. See, we have another student rep coming. Um, Mr. Alper responded to the superintendent search issues, so I won't repeat that. That is all I have. Um, thank you, Ms. Newsom, for always coming to the meetings and updating us. I haven't been able to get to the, the last restraint, um, session that you had. I didn't know when it was happening, but I'll certainly try to get to the next one. Um, that's all I have. I, I know Mr. Moore is here, so he'll probably speak to the dance and whatever is happening, or the, the high school students will fill us in. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. How exciting is this? My first comment as a board member. Um, I want to thank Sam. Sam is my buddy. Um, I met Sam a while ago, and I'm so glad he was here tonight. And Sam, I know you have some other ideas that you want to bring, so maybe at the next board meeting, you'll talk about those other things you want to do? Okay, wink, wink. Okay, and, uh, just thank you to everyone who came out tonight, and, uh, it is really exciting. I'm enthusiastic. I certainly look forward to this very awesome, awesome responsibility. Being part of the governance that overlooks the running of our school district. It is an awesome responsibility, something I take very, very seriously. I also do believe that we're a community, and it takes a village, an African proverb. It takes a village to raise a child, and we certainly need everyone's input. We don't know everything. We need to be good listeners, and we need to be eager learners. We need you at the table. So as we move forward with the very, very important job of, um, searching for a new superintendent, I know many of you out there are very eager to be a part of that, and believe me, the board will be working to figure out how we can include you. So again, thank you for being here tonight, and please keep coming. Just don't come for this one. Keep, keep, keep a coming. Thank you. And congratulations to Ken and to Sandra. And I am going to be really excited working with our young folks down there. Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
Well, congratulations to Ms. Gales and Ms. Merklinger. I'm too happy to have you on board. You've brought new energy already. Uh, congratulations to Mr. Alper and Ms. Mordecai, and, uh, our, just want folks to know, uh, Sam, thank you for speaking up, and it takes a lot of courage to get up to the mic. And, uh, you should definitely connect with our student representatives. Uh, they've actually brought a number of initiatives to bear. Uh, they, it's, you know, exactly what you're talking about. Their voice has made a difference already in everything from addressing bus schedules, GPS, uh, GPS usage on the buses, uh, feminine products, and just a variety of things. Having later bus schedules so the kids can actually sleep in, and they've actually brought up, uh, having later school times as well, we've talked about. So thank you for speaking up, and you're probably our next rep. Um, in regard to, um, Ms. Newsom, I want to thank you too for, I mean, you all have done so much hard work, and you have so many events so that people can fit it into their schedules, to give everyone access to the wonderful information and trainings that you're providing. That's, that's critical. Um, and Ms. Velazquez, I think what we're seeing now in terms of the winter dance, maybe this is an opportunity to, in general, look at how we do a better job of inclusiveness and partnering, uh, between students to help our special needs students, to develop those friendships, those relationships, those partnerships, and, and it's a great, it's a, it's a great opportunity for kindness and giving and understanding on, on everyone's part. So, uh, I think that, that's a call to action for us. Yeah, let me see, who else here? In regard to, hold on a second. And Ms. Beezer, thank you so much for your comments. I really deeply appreciate, uh, your, your advocating and speaking up for me. Um, it touched my heart deeply. Um, that's, oh, uh, that was it. That's basically it. Thank you very much.
Ms. Merklinger?
Um, so I'll keep this very short, um, just because I see the time, and I want to let our students, um, get their chance to speak. But I do want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I want to thank Terry, um, and congratulate her, as well as Jeremiah. It's great to see you here, and continuing to support our school district. Um, Ken and Sandra, congratulations as well. Um, I just want to say, obviously, uh, for most of you know that I'm heavily involved with sports, so I am definitely involved with the bubble, and will be looking forward to seeing that come to fruition. Um, as well as the mobile app. I'm very much a smartphone person, so I'm with you on getting that updated. And to Amber and Gina, um, I've worked with you on several of the special needs, um, events with our PAL organization. I look to bringing that to a broader scope in town, so look forward to working with both of you as well. So thank you, everyone, again, for coming out tonight.
Okay, thank you. Just one more comment I forgot. Um, also, to our, our teachers who, who, uh, asked about compensation, and Mr. Alper's addressed that, I just want to apologize. Um, I don't believe that it should take in two months to be able to say that we have, we're working on something that's in progress, uh, and that we not only appreciate you, but we intend to compensate you. Uh, I personally, this is speaking for me and not for the board, that it shouldn't take two months to be able to say that. And I thank you for your sacrifices. I got to personally see firsthand at Liberty and at Mount Pleasant, uh, how everything was handled, and how happy our children were despite the difficult circumstances. And you all were, our teachers were such a positive force, as well as our administrators. I want to thank you.
Let's hear from our students.
Alright, so, um, we have a lot of various updates and questions. Um, so first up, we wanted to ask a few, a few questions on bus transportation, but I think most of them were covered throughout the, so far. Um, the only question we have remaining is if, um, so we, you mentioned, I think it was Ms. Mendez who mentioned, uh, mentioned that we were, you are working on the bus trans, the bus apps and the IDs and so. And if it is, get, if, if we do get the grant, and if you do pass this, um, how will students get the IDs, not only in the high school, but also elementary school and, and middle school, and if that's still going to be, um, if there, if there are any, I think there were some ques- security questions brought up earlier about that, about, um, tracking the middle schoo- the elementary middle schoolers as well. Um, and then secondly, um, we just want to update that we're working on, we're, we're looking towards, um, solving and addressing overcrowding on our high school buses, especially the late buses, and we're going to be sending out surveys to get more data on that soon. Um, as for the feminine hygiene products, um, I was going well. Um, there was an update today, that we had a few dispensers that were broken, but there, there was a new order placed today, so that was updated. And the current dispensers are being used and refilled nicely, so that's good news. Um, we wanted to ask about, a new issue hasn't been brought up, but that we've noticed recently. Um, the kind of, we have the student parking lot here in West Orange High School. Um, we wanted to ask, um, if we could have any kind of way for the West Orange Police Department to come look at the traffic patterns in that area, because sometimes you have as many as maybe like fifty to eighty cars trying to exit the parking lot through one lane at the same time. Um, there's a lot of congestion and backup, and it's dangerous also, not just for students, but also for staff that are try, all trying to exit in the same way. Um, so just, if there's any way that we can get the police department to come and just survey and have any recommendations, um, that's all for me.
Um, in terms of delayed school days, I know, Mr. Robertson, you brought it up earlier, but, uh, I think two meetings ago, we asked about what the, um, situation is, uh, because it was proposed at the beginning of the year, on what's happening with the delayed school timings. So I think that even if we get, uh, like fifteen minutes later, school opening, it'll be a big difference, and students will have much more time in the morning. They'll feel, it just, cutting more fifteen minutes is going to be beneficial for us, because it'll give us more time to get ready. It won't be as hectic. And breakfast is a big thing. I know in the morning, I can't eat breakfast, because I'm always rushing out of the house. So getting that extra fifteen minutes in is definitely going to help us. And I just wanted to know what the situation on that was. Um, so just, uh, we want to shout out a couple of upcoming high school events. So on Wednesday, Cecina and I and the rest of, um, the student council members will be attending the NJ Association of Student Council's Winter Convention at TCNJ, and we're up for two awards currently. The high school, the student council. Um, uh, in terms of the dance, uh, it's on January twenty-fifth, and it's sponsored by the PTA. Um, student council will be selling tickets, and you can contact Ms. Connors or any other student council members for additional information. Um, I know special ed, the whole, um, getting peers to accompany special ed kids. Um, Cecina and I are part of, um, a program at the high school called Mount near Mentorship, and Mr. Zakella, who runs it, he normally, um, is in charge of all, all of that stuff, so we can definitely speak to him about getting peers to accompany special ed kids to the dance. And then, um, student council is also hosting its annual Black History Month Scholarship Dinner, and it's Friday, February first, at the high school, and it's open to the entire town, and so is, um, the, the. Yeah, it is. The dance, right? No, not the dance. Okay, sorry. Just the, um, scholarship dinner is open to the entire town. And then the last thing, um, is Scriptus, the National English, English Honor Society, um, is hosting its annual Poetry Out Loud on January sixteenth. So the town is invited to come and watch students present their poems. In the auditorium, the high school. Little theater, just kidding, sorry. Normally it's auditorium.
So just a quick side note, I think this is mentioned in previous, in a previous meeting, or maybe even months ago, but, um, this was kind of brought up to me also by my siblings who are middle schoolers. They, what, that there is issue, I think that it was, it was a pop, a rule that was even when we were in middle school. I think it was like a long rule, longstanding rule, that students aren't allowed to carry water bottles unless they have a doctor's note. And, I mean, looking back on it, I don't know how it survived, seven hours every day without water, except for lunch. But, um, I just want to know, like, if there was a real, or if there's a kind of, um, a rule or reasoning behind it, that there's no compromise? Uh, just all, I know, I, as far as I know, Lib- I went to Liberty, my brothers go to Roosevelt and Edison, and it's the same there.
I believe a parent came to the microphone about a month ago and, and spoke about the Edison water bottle issue. I didn't realize it was happening at all three middle schools.
I'm not aware of any policy. Let me look into that. Um, with regard to the, uh, student IDs, uh, we are going to have to phase that plan in, right? Um, so as soon as we get through the grant process, uh, as soon as we get technical training on how the IDs work, uh, how we would implement that, then we could create an action plan that would say, this is the timeline for a high school implementation, a middle school, and/or an elementary. Uh, just because we have to work out some things for elementary doesn't impede us or stop us from implementing at the high school. I'm going to venture to say that we would be able to implement GPS right away, because once the equipment is on, it's on, uh, and then we'd have to plan for the, the student IDs. Um, with the parking lot, we can absolutely reach out to the WOPD, to the police department, and have them come, give us some guidance and support. In addition to that, our, uh, New Jersey Department of Education will be visiting us, uh, at the end of January to begin walkthroughs in our buildings to inform our security plans, and that can be a part of that discussion as well, so we can get two perspectives on the parking lot issue. Um, and we're going to have to begin to look at the delayed school days, uh, reach out to the students, reach out to, uh, parents, uh, via surveys, and put a committee together to begin to look at research, uh, for what that would look like, how we could make that adjustment, uh, possible in district to include transportation, right? So we would have to analyze quite a few things, but we can definitely begin that work. So I'll reach out to you personally to begin to set up some planning.
Thank you very much. Do any, you have something?
Just have a question, uh, for student representatives. Um, given that you're in this, this new and dynamic role, and you've done such a wonderful job with it, I know that your plates are full, because you're both taking APs, and, and you're in a whole bunch of clubs and, and honor societies and all that. But have you thought about going, uh, meeting with the student governments at each of the schools? Because you're fantastic role models, number one. Number two, it gives you an opportunity to tap into whatever, uh, insights or issues they've already begun to discuss, to incorporate that into, uh, your overall plan, or your overall considerations.
So Cecina and I, we're actually discussing earlier, we think it would be a great idea to have an advisory kind of group, where we have student councils from not, maybe not every grade in the high school, but from every elementary school, every middle school, to see the overarching issues throughout the district, so that we, so that communication is better. So, because right now, we only have information basically from high school students, because it's harder to address our website and everything else to middle schoolers and elementary schoolers. So I know the letter's going out, but, uh, we should definitely, we can definitely look into loo- having some form of communication with the younger kids, and seeing what else works out.
And I just want to take an opportunity to give a shout out to Ms. Connors, because you do such phenomenal work, not only in the health sciences, but, uh, as a, as a senior advisor, and you just, you work so hard, and you do it with nothing but love and dedication. And, can we give her a hand for applause, please? That's it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, uh, next up, we're going to do an executive discuss, uh, executive session. We'll need a motion for that. We're going to discuss some confidential matters, as noted on the agenda, the checked off items. Uh, we anticipate that we're going to be out for about fifteen minutes, then we're going to come back and vote on the remaining two items on the agenda, and then, uh, you folks can go home, and we'll go back into closed to finish off our evening. And we won't take any further action in that second closed session. So we need a motion to accomplish that.
Motion.
I'll second. Can I second? Alright, yes, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're back on the record with item six, Resolution to Approve Contract for Acting Superintendent of Schools. Anybody to read it out loud, or do we just do a motion?
No, it's, it's on the agenda.
We have a motion to approve item six.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Alright. Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trig, Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
Next, item seven, Resolution to Approve Contract for Acting Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. Ken, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trig, Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
Okay, uh, our next board meeting will be held at six-thirty PM with the public session at eight PM, right here at the high school on January twenty-eighth, and at this time, I would like a motion to go back into closed session to return to discussing the items previously noted on the agenda, uh, where no further action will be taken.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.